Good evening. I would like to call to order the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for Monday, September the eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Corey Stites.
Here.
Leah Dozeman. Rachel Holtein.
She's planning to be just a few minutes late.
Thank you. Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Dan Larson.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Jenny Snell.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors, are there any changes to be noted in the agenda for tonight? Seeing none, we will move ahead as prepared in our packet. We have two proclamations tonight. Our first proclamation is National Hispanic Heritage Month, September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas Hispanic Americans have contributed greatly to our nation in all areas, including science, art, music, sports, education, and public service, and have bravely served their country in large numbers at times of peace, war, and in every way in our nation's history. And whereas, in nineteen sixty-eight, Congress authorized President Lyndon Baines Johnson to proclaim National Hispanic American Heritage Week, and this observance was expanded in nineteen eighty-eight to a month-long celebration. And whereas, during the month, Americans celebrate the traditions, ancestry, and unique experiences of those who trace their family background to Spain and Latin American countries. And whereas, twenty-one percent of Wheat Ridge residents identify as Hispanic or Latino. And whereas, throughout our history, Hispanic Americans have enriched the American way of life, and we recognize that millions of Hispanic Americans whose love of family, hard work, and community have helped unite us as a nation. And whereas, accomplishments made by Hispanic Americans serve as an inspiration to all who seek freedom, opportunity, and a new beginning for themselves and their children. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, wish to recognize September fifteen through October fifteen as National Hispanic Heritage Month and encourage residents of the city of Wheat Ridge to celebrate the cultural, professional, educational, and civic contributions of the Hispanic community dated this eighth day of September, two thousand and twenty-five. And we have another proclamation, and I would like to invite Hallie Nelson to join me from the Jefferson County Food Policy Council. Come on up. How are you tonight? Great, thanks for coming. So this is a proclamation to designate, to recognize September Hunger Action Month, recognizing and responding to food insecurity in Jefferson County. Whereas food is a basic need and a right, essential to the health, well-being, and prosperity of all residents. And whereas, an estimated one in thirteen Jefferson County residents struggle with food insecurity, lacking consistent access to sufficient nutritious food. And whereas, food insecurity in Wheat Ridge has been exacerbated by rising costs of living, loss of federal supports, systematic inequalities, and limited access to affordable, healthy food in parts of the county. And whereas, the impact of food insecurity are not experienced equally, disproportionately affecting low-income households, communities of color, immigrants and refugees, older adults, and people with disabilities. And whereas, Jefferson County is home to a wide array of food assistance providers, community-based organizations, public agencies, and local food producers who are working tirelessly to reduce hunger and increase access to healthy, culturally-relevant, relevant, and locally-grown food. And whereas, local food pantries, WIC clinics, school nutrition programs, farmers' markets, and mutual aid groups report increasing demand and greater complexity in meeting the needs of the communities they serve. And whereas, local producers are advancing innovative approaches to food access and food justice while facing their own challenges in land access, infrastructure, and economic viability. And whereas, Jefferson County Food Policy Council and Feeding Jeffco Together, a collaborative food pantry, fundraising group, continues to lead and support efforts that strengthen the local food systems, promote food sovereignty, and ensure all residents can thrive. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council do hereby declare September twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five as Hunger Action Month in Wheat Ridge and call upon all residents, organizations, and policymakers to support a more just, resilient, and equitable food system for all dated this eighth day of September, two thousand and twenty-five. And I would like to present this to you. And would you like to say a few words? Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much for coming tonight. We appreciate it, and we're going to get a, we had the obligatory photo, so let's, you got to open this up. So we've got the full proclamation right there. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, we will now go to our public's right to speak. This is an opportunity for citizens to come and address the council for a, for three minutes. So when I call your name, if you'd please come to the podium, give us your first name and your last name. And would you go turn the podium so it looks to us? Thank you. If you'd please give us your first name and your last name, please spell your last name so we get it right in the record, and then tell us whether you live or work in Wheat Ridge, you know, about three minutes to address the council. And our first speaker is Russell Roundtree, and Hallie Nelson is on deck.
Thank you very much for your time. My name is Russell Roundtree, just the way it sounds, R-O-U-N-D-T-R-W-E. I am here representing The Tin Shed, which is the name of the largest food pantry in Wheat Ridge, and I've been volunteering and working there now for the last almost three years. And I wanted to give a bit of a testimonial about how things have changed over the last three years in the food pantry business. So when I first started, we served, we served food once per week. We opened the doors at one o'clock every Tuesday and stay open until six. There is no exclusion, everyone is welcome, and it is a food pantry whereby you select what you want. So you shop for the food you want, you don't get a box of something that you throw half away because you didn't want it. When I first started, almost three years ago, we were serving about one hundred guests per week. And of that, that demographically kind of split basically along the lines of about one-third were sort of underprivileged Americans, we had many homeless, et cetera. About one-third were Latinos, primarily Mexicans and Central Americans, and then we had about one-third who were Ukrainian refugees. So you could kind of see that mix. Roll forward about eighteen months, we crested out at over seven hundred. So we went from one hundred to seven hundred in about eighteen months. And of that seven hundred, that was a huge bubble of primarily Venezuelan immigrants. And so we had lots of challenges, not the least of which was having enough language support to be able to properly serve these guests who were very new to our country and all of our procedures and policies, et cetera. That has drifted down over time, and so we are now at a very stable place at about four hundred. We serve about four hundred every week, and that is partially because I would suspect that our food supplies have also drifted down. So in that three years, not only have we gone from one, from one hundred to seven hundred to four hundred in serving people, but we have also gone down about a factor of five in the supply of food. And that is becoming a very big challenge. We're now sourcing almost half of our food from what we call food rescue, which is donations from private companies like Walmart and King Supers and others. And that presents additional unique challenges. And then funding is the last item that I want to kind of point out. And funding for us in terms of the grants that we apply for and the award amounts relative to three years ago, that we're at about one-third. So just kind of in general, funding's down about a factor of three, food supply's down by almost a factor of five, and we're up to four hundred at a pretty sustained pace. So that's what's going on in your city, your county. At The Tin Shed, I welcome you to come see us anytime, any Tuesday afternoon, please join us. We're on Forty-fourth, about halfway between Kipling and Ward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I was remiss in not telling you about the lights. We have the green lights when they're on, they're good. When it turns yellow, your time is approaching over, and red, it's time to stop. So you're in great shape. Thank you so much. So our next speaker is Hallie Nelson, and Paige Piper is on deck.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council and community members. My name's Hallie Nelson. I serve as the Director of the Jefferson County Food Policy Council, and so I work within Wheat Ridge. Our council brings together partners to build a stronger food system. We have over three hundred and fifty members, and that includes community members experiencing food insecurity, food pantries responding to food insecurity, and we also work with farmers and gardeners. We work with Happiness Gardens a lot here in Wheat Ridge. And on behalf of the Jefferson County Food Policy Council and our pantry partners, I want to thank you for the proclamation for Hunger Action Month. It sends a powerful message that hunger is an issue in our community and that together we can be the solution. And I'm excited to tell you about a new solution that we have for Jefferson County. It is the launch of Feeding Jeffco Together. So over the past year, the Food Policy Council has led meetings with ten food pantries, working to find one place to donate for food insecurity across the county. So this September, during Hunger Action Month, we're launching what we're calling Feeding Jeffco Together. It's a collaborative fundraiser that benefits those ten pantries. And these organizations are on the front line every day, making sure our neighbors have enough to eat, and they range from pantries like Tin Shed here in Wheat Ridge to pantries in Littleton and Conifer, all over Jefferson County. The collective impact of our pantries is extraordinary. Last year, these ten pantries served over three hundred thousand individuals with more than four-point-three million pounds of food, all with just over five hundred thousand dollars. This food is not just canned, it's high-quality produce, proteins, and more. And Feeding Jeffco is evidence of what's possible when you work together. It's more efficient and more impact and lives changed. We know the need is growing. More than one in thirteen people in Jefferson County are food insecure, including one in eight children. Families are making impossible choices between food, rent, and health care. With recent federal cuts to federal food programs that support food pantries, we're already seeing the impacts here in Jeffco. And this is going to be dramatically exacerbated by the looming cuts to SNAP and Medicaid. Nationwide, Feeding America Food Banks provided six billion meals last year, but SNAP delivered nine times that amount. As federal support shrinks, the burden shifts to local communities, and our pantries are serving more people with fewer resources than ever. So through Feeding Jeffco Together, your donation can go further. By pooling resources, our pantries stretch every dollar to feed more families than any one of us could alone. A gift of even five dollars can make a difference that is about three meals. So I invite everyone listening, as council members and community members, to take action this Hunger Action Month, and please consider making a gift and sharing this fundraiser with your networks. You can learn more and give at coloradogives.org/events/feedingjeffco. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Paige Piper, and Kathleen Martel is on deck.
Good evening, Mayor Starker and members of Wheat Ridge City Council. It's great to be here. For the record, my name is Paige Piper, and I work in Wheat Ridge, nine-one-one-zero West Forty-fourth Avenue. As I know, council's very familiar and aware, one of the largest initiatives that Local Works has launched is Clear Creek Maker Space, and I would love to give you a quick overview of the impact we've had over the past seventeen months. We've served over three hundred and fifty members of the space, currently serving two hundred and forty active members. Thirty-three thousand people have visited Clear Creek Maker Space since opening. Seventeen hundred people have been trained on a new piece of equipment or technology that has had a direct effect on better career opportunities. Seven hundred and ninety classes have been offered, and four business licenses have been filed in the city of Wheat Ridge, a direct correlation of the learning that's happening at the space. This is a brief illustration of the impact CCM has made both in our community and the Jefferson County region. And although it's a brief illustration, our impact will not be brief, and in order to keep up with the demand that CCM now has, it's time for us to expand. Literally, CCM is beginning to burst at the seams when it comes to the amount of usage we are seeing, especially the space used for many entrepreneurs that we've been working with in the space that are starting and maintaining small businesses. You should have received a brief memo from me in your council email on August twenty-fifth outlining our request for a contribution from the city of Wheat Ridge for thirty thousand dollars to assist in the total expansion of CCM, a cost estimating at a total of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The thirty thousand dollar request at this time is specific to assistance with funding the stamped architectural drawings. The remaining funds required for this project will be sought through a public capital campaign and investment from Local Works. The expansion of CCM to be known as the CCM Creative Commons will include an additional eight hundred amps of power, the outfitting of shipping containers, including insulation, HVAC, doors, windows, electrical to the containers themselves, and a proper foundation for the Creative Commons. This expansion will allow CCM to double our current capacity, increase our revenues by twenty-five percent, and serve and train an additional one thousand people per year on key workforce development skills specific to the trades, a need that is desperate in Jefferson County. This expansion also highlights a partnership with the city of Wheat Ridge and the anticipated new city plan to be adopted to pilot shipping containers as a viable option for commercial expansion in Wheat Ridge where the code may allow. CCM has truly not been possible without the incredible partnership and support we have seen from the city of Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge City Council, and Mayor Starker. I thank you for your time this evening, and we sincerely appreciate your consideration of our request to assist in the Creative Commons expansion through a contribution of thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathleen Martel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I have a couple of things really that I want to touch on really quick, but first, as a metal shop captain at the Clear Creek Maker Space, my shop will very directly benefit from the commons, and so I really encourage you all to consider this donation to the Clear Creek Maker Space. It has enhanced my life, and I have enjoyed all the connections made there. I'd also like to say thank you to the city and Parks and Rec for the spectacular weekend, this weekend at the Greens and the opening of the Greens at thirty-eighth. It was such a great day, and I just really want to thank everyone and commend all the citizens and all the residents that really were involved from the very beginning and gave such great feedback to get to where we were and what we got to spend time in this weekend. It was awesome. I also spent Sunday at Happiness Gardens and would like to recognize Parks and Rec and YY particularly at Happiness Gardens for the Harvest Festival that took place yesterday. There were a lot of people in attendance, and I was surprised at how many people I spoke with that had never been to Happiness Gardens before, that were not gardeners at the place, and saw the Harvest Festival in the Parks and Rec booklet that came out and just came. A couple people were like, I was really kind of scared to show up alone to this event, and it was just this great display of community. It was a beautiful day, and it was great connections and great food. So a great win for Parks and Rec and the city this weekend, and thank you so much.
Thank you. That's all of the people that I have signed up to speak on Public's Right to Speak, and we have no one online. So with that, we will go to our agenda item number one. Counselor Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution forty-three, two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution adopting the city plan as the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan. At issue, the city plan is the culmination of sixteen months of input from the Wheat Ridge community. The purpose of the city plan is to supersede the two thousand and nine envisioned Wheat Ridge as the new comprehensive plan for the city. It articulates the community's vision for the next fifteen years, establishes shared values, and identifies priorities for the future.
Thank you. This is going to be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. It is a public hearing, and I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, we have a staff presentation on this item.
We do. Ellis Stevie is here this evening, our senior planner, and we are pulling the presentation up as we speak.
Please continue.
Thank you for doing that, Ashley. We are really excited to be here tonight, really, really thrilled to finally be here to talk to you all and recommend adoption of the city plan. So I'm Ellis Stevie. I'm a senior planner, and I'm also the project manager for the city plan. I'm joined with my colleague, Ashley Holland, the Community Engagement Specialist, and we also have Eric Amy from CZB in the audience with us today from our consultant team. So as you all may remember, I was here in July. We went through the draft plan together. We had a lot of content to cover, and as a result, I had a pretty involved presentation. I promise tonight will be much more brief. I really just want to summarize again the main points from what we talked about in July as a reminder to you all and to those who are listening what we will be adopting or hopefully adopting here tonight. So I am going to hand it over to Ashley first to talk about the process. She is, she both designed and implemented the communication and engagement that we've been so proud of in this process, so I'm very happy to have her here tonight to get the great credit for all of her good work. So she's going to talk about process, then I'll just give a brief overview of the key takeaways from the plan, finishing up with the implementation portion of the plan. So I will hand it over to Ashley to talk about process.
Thank you. We are just thrilled to be here tonight for this big milestone. As you all know, and as Ella just mentioned, we've been working on this for a while, from the start of early two thousand and twenty-four, and we have had the great pleasure of speaking with a lot of community members about this plan. So we had four phases of engagement throughout this process. Those all included both online opportunities and in-person opportunities for folks to give feedback. We also had an incredible steering committee. We had the great pleasure of working with them, and they helped guide us through the process during our six meetings. And we had another group of great folks called our Neighborhood Champions, and this was a hundred community members who really went above and beyond to get people involved, to get their neighbors and friends excited about participating. We spent a day at Wheat Ridge High School, making sure that the youth perspective was aligned with what we were hearing for the rest of the community. And throughout these tactics and many others, we saw a lot of folks engage in the process. So we had about five hundred and fifteen people come out in person to our open houses. We had over a thousand submissions to our online engagement activities, and then lots of people that we just talked to out in the community. Since we were last here in July, we took the public feedback that we got, feedback from you all and from Planning Commission, to make some tweaks to the document, and that's the version that you saw before tonight. And then if it's adopted, then tomorrow we'll put a fresh one up on What's Up Wheat Ridge, and that will be the version that we all use moving forward. But really, we want to take this opportunity to express our sincere thank you to the Wheat Ridge community for showing up and continuing to show up, whether you came to one of our in-person events, or you took time to take the survey online, or stopped by one of our booths at the community events. We really appreciate all of the input that we got from our community. And this is kind of a unique planning process where each phase of engagement built upon the last, and so people had the opportunity to engage one, two, three, and four times. And we really saw some of the same faces throughout the entire process because they were excited, and it really just shows the commitment that the residents of Wheat Ridge have for the future of our city. So we are very proud of this plan, and a huge part of that is because our community, as always, showed up and gave us their feedback.
All right, so I'm just going to give a quick refresher on the high-level content of the plan. So as a reminder, the city plan, our new, as our comprehensive plan, will shape the future of Wheat Ridge over the next fifteen or so years. It articulates a path forward based on what the city wants to become in the future. So the plan establishes our core values, which are our shared beliefs that articulate who we are as a community. These are independent-minded, inclusive, and forward-looking. It also establishes our planning principles, which are criteria to evaluate decisions and ensure that those decisions reinforce our values. So they articulate what we care about most. They are to serve a mix of incomes, to preserve our patchwork quilt, to focus on sustainability, and to strengthen the city's fiscal position. Then we have our planning priorities. So these are those big moves that we need to get right for the community to become the best version of itself. They are improved retail and business environment, thirty-eighth Avenue as Wheat Ridge's main street, a network of pedestrian and bicycle facilities across the city, and proactive infrastructure management. So then we have our character and development vision, which explains how the community would like to shape and reinforce the city's character into the future. So to do this, the plan articulates what we're trying to achieve. The desired outcomes detailed in the plan are allowing us to evolve while continuing to feel like Wheat Ridge, peaceful coexistence between new development and existing neighborhoods, improved connectivity and access, and making great places. So now I'll talk about the part of the plan that guides our implementation into the future. So the plan articulates three goals that will help us become the best version of ourselves: modern infrastructure, thoughtful placemaking, and thriving businesses and neighborhoods. So based on everything we've talked about, the values, priorities, and principles, and then our character and development vision, these three goals organize the strategies and actions needed to bring this plan to life. So thank you all for your thoughtful input throughout this entire planning process. As Ashley said, that is really a big part of why we're so proud of this plan, because it reflects so much Wheat Ridge, including all of the voices here tonight. So we really look forward to working with this group to implement the plan. And that is all for our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I go to questions from council, I'd like to invite the public to speak on this item. Several people signed up to speak. Our first speaker is, looks like Josh McEwan. Josh is here. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll move for our next speaker, which is- Okay, well, we'll move for our next speaker, which is Russell Roundtree. He's gone. Okay. We will go to our third speaker, Kathleen Martell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. And I also realized I didn't state my name when I was up here earlier tonight. I'm Kathleen Martell, District One. I live, work, and play in Wheat Ridge. For the city plan, I was lucky enough to be a part of the steering committee that worked for the last year and a half on this plan. And I just wanted to reiterate, I've been here before and said I'm really excited about the plan. I think it took a lot of different voices and found a really good solution and plan that allows for the most to have something to look forward to. Not everybody gets everything they want, but I think this plan will be an excellent tool for our city moving forward. And I'm really excited for the implementation of this plan and to see our city continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the speakers that I've signed up to speak, so I'll go to questions from council. We have questions from council. Councilor Larson.
Just one real question. Does our approval of this resolution tonight obligate the city to do anything?
So an adopted plan is a guiding document. It's not a regulatory document. It's not a law. But certainly the public trust that we have built up, I think in our minds, does obligate us to do something. So there's a little bit of a distinction there.
Thank you. Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the brief presentation on the very long document. A little bit building on what council member Larson just asked, I'm excited we're here. I've been really excited to adopt this. So what's next? What happens after we adopt this? What are some of the priority strategies that are being discussed among staff about what happens after today?
One of the things that I really like about this plan is it's pretty clear about what those, you know, what, a lot of comprehensive plans have 200 strategies in them and ours doesn't. It doesn't have nearly that many. So we have those kind of three goals is one way to think about it. Then at the end of that implementation chapter, Chapter Five, we have kind of a timeline that lays out those different actions, yeah, the actions and strategies by goal. And they, you can see them according to timeline. So that kind of gives you an idea of what we, you know, as we were coming towards the end of this plan, we really thought as a city, like what's feasible, what can we keep moving? We wanted to be ambitious and realistic. And so I think the timeline reflects that. So as an example, I think within the thoughtful placemaking, we have some tweaks to the zoning code that we know we want to make. So that will be one of the pieces. So it's really, you know, we've been very focused on this document, but I've already started my implementation plan and I'm going to be talking to Lauren about it on Thursday to start to map that out. So a few things I want to track for accountability are going to be looking across those priorities and across our goals from the implementation chapter to just make sure that we're kind of keeping an eye on all of those moving pieces. We'll be talking about the city plan a whole lot. I will, I'm apologizing to everyone in advance for how many times you'll hear me say, well, the city plan says, because I will be bringing that up in budget conversations as we're trying to figure out, you know, I have a spreadsheet where I can kind of look at it by, there are a lot of different ways to slice and dice what's in there to make sure that we are moving forward on this. So the plan isn't there yet, but we specifically deliberately set this plan up to be easy to get to that next step.
Thank you. It's really helpful to hear sort of how staff takes this and then starts to implement it. So it does have not 200 things, but it still has some heavy lifts ahead. And so we're looking forward to seeing how those start to iterate out. And I'm really excited about this plan. Thank you for all your work on it.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Councilor Dozeman, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution 43-2025, a resolution adopting the city plan as the Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan.
We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Weaver.
I just want to thank all the effort that went into this. Since my time on council is coming to a close, there's been a really distinct change in how we engage with our population. And I'm looking at the people who have been involved in that and it's just, it's really different than it was seven years ago. And I think that's fantastic. The fact that you said 1,000 people have engaged online and we're seeing that participation that we hoped we would get to. So I think the city plan's great, but I also want to thank all of you that have been working so hard on listening to everybody. That's not an easy task to integrate all of that. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to kind of ditto what council member Weaver just said. I just, you know, the nice thing about when we have this much participation through our community, then it really turns into the community's document. And I think that's important because they've spent a lot of time and effort and volunteer time. And then, you know, it helps with the staff, you know, find a pathway forward. And so just thank you to all of our volunteers that spent their time working on this document.
Thank you, Councilor Olm.
Thank you, Mayor. I first just want to thank staff and our consultant. I think what a, what a great job that you've done. In the past, I've seen some of the, a long time ago, some of the older comprehensive plans and they were not near as shiny as this. This is really exciting. There's a lot of really good information. I hope that, you know, I hope that staff's excited about this. I hope that our public is excited, that they've had a lot of opportunity to weigh in and I can't wait to see what's next. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will echo my colleagues' comments. It has been a world of difference in the public input process and how we've engaged our stakeholders and residents. And I really would like to thank them for coming out and contributing and participating in this huge planning era efforts. So that not only is this our city plan, but we've also done a lot of work in how holistically this is going to show up in Wheat Ridge for generations to come. And I'm really, really proud of the work and I'm grateful for staff and CZB for sticking with it for almost a year and a half and really just communicating very well to us as council and bringing us in to the process all along. And I think this is a phenomenal just culmination of that really hard work. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will echo my colleagues up here and kudos to the entire process, everyone who was involved, the team. There's a little difference between hearing and listening. And I think that the listening that your team did for as long as you did, for as many hours as you did, was incredible. And it shows, I mean, it shows in this final product. But also I wanted to just commend you on the amount of information, not only that you got out to the public every time there was something new, every time there was another phase or another change, but also us as council, I felt very informed. I felt listened to. I felt heard and just a great job all around. And it's a really exciting thing for our city. So kudos to you and to all of us, really. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, I too would like to recognize the, all the effort that went into this and the fact that there was a superior effort made to bring in as many people in the community as possible. I would hope that in 15 years, that'd be 2040, that the council and staff at the time recognized that 179 pages of a document is probably too much. There is much in this document that is repetitive, that could be compressed probably. And as a former magazine editor, I would say go back and compress it by about a third. There's just too much stuff in there for anybody practically to be able to read. Now, I understand that it is important to have the different sections sort of consistent and whatnot, but I still think that 179 pages is probably too long. My personal belief, and I've said this before, is that I believe this document puts too much emphasis on bicycle and pedestrian developments ahead of some other important issues. But I do recognize that in this document, we have recognition that our capital improvement plan needs some work. And there is mention of a, a sales tax is a way to do that. There's also mention in there, another part of the document about a utility fee to recognize the, some of the deferred maintenance that we've got to address. But other than that, this, again, a very comprehensive document, there is a lot in here to like. And I believe there is a lot in here that when people five, 10 years from now have to make decisions about what happens in Wheat Ridge, that they will do very well by consulting this document.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll echo what's been said by most of my colleagues here. I really appreciate the community for coming out and making this a big effort. This was really cool. And Ashley and her team and Ella, you guys did a phenomenal job. CCP, as always, phenomenal job. I love getting plans from you guys because they're implementable, we can take action on them. And that's, I guess, my next point is a plan that sits on the shelf does us no good. So we got to make sure that we absolutely violently implement this plan and make sure that our staff, our council, our future council, I see a bunch of candidates in the, in the audience tonight, that we use this as a guiding force as we, as we move forward and make decisions. So let's make sure that we look at it, we use it, and we take advantage of what our community has given us here because this is a pretty helpful document for as we move forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mayor. I've already said thank you once. I say thank you again, both to staff and our consultant, but really to our community members, because this document is only as good as the efforts of both the steering committee and the community champions. And then everyone had took the time to give us their thoughts on the questions we were asking them. It dawned on me, when I moved here almost 14 years ago, this was our existing comp plan, soon minutes from being our old comp plan, was fresh. And I, you know, one of my first things I got to do in Wheat Ridge was work on a nine year community investment grant. And one of the first things I was told to do in my first week was read the comp plan. And I was like, what's a comp plan? And it was really one of my first, first introductions to the city and how the city saw its potential. And when I look back on our soon to be outdated comp plan, it's, you know, it's, a lot has been accomplished in there. And to council member Larson's questions, you know, this is, this is a framework and it's a roadmap. And there's a lot of decisions ahead of us on how we work with this. And I'm really encouraged that compared to the fresh version I first encountered back when I first moved to the city, we now have such a robust infrastructure in place to engage our community in those questions. So it's very much a living document, not in that we're rethinking the 179 pages, but when we look at what that implementation looks like, like that's the living work ahead of us, both here on the dais, but also through our city's commitment and success in engaging the community. So that has me really excited and curious about what this looks like moving forward when I reflect back on looking at envisioned Wheat Ridge and how much of what makes Wheat Ridge a great place to live today. I think Kathleen Martell said earlier, live, work, play. And I was like, actually, this is like a city where we create, spend, connect, and rest and recreate. But a lot of what makes Wheat Ridge so good in all those places is the comp plan framework that we adopted in 2009. So I can only imagine what 15 years from now is going to look like, but this is a great guiding document. And I just really, as council member Hoppy said, this is a people's plan and looking forward to engaging with it for a few more years on the dais. And then when I'm on the other side of the dais, I'll still be a person and looking forward to staying engaged all the way through. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Eight ayes, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. We will move now to agenda item number two. Councilor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution 44-2025. This is a resolution approving the assignment to the Jefferson County Housing Authority, DBA Foothills Regional Housing, for $2,080,116 of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado's 2025 private activity bond volume cap allocation from the state ceiling for private activity bonds and authorizing the execution and delivery of an assignment and other documents in connection
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Just a very brief presentation. This is a public hearing. City does receive on an annual basis.
I don't have this down as a public hearing. Is it a public hearing?
Oh, it should be. I'm sorry. It wasn't. Box was not checked. Yes.
Then let's go back and I want to open the public hearing. And now, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
The city does receive on an annual basis private activity bonds, which is under the Tax Reform Act of 1987. This year's allocation is just over $2 million. As council member Weaver mentions, private activity bonds are tax-exempt bonds that are designed to offer low-cost financing. And they may be used to finance a broad wave, broad array of community development projects, including affordable housing. The city has in the past assigned its private activity bond allocation to Foothills Regional Housing, most recently for the Caesar Square Apartments, Allison Village, which is in Arbada, and then also just more recently, the Ives Affordable Housing Project at 44th and Wadsworth. Foothills Regional Housing has requested again this year's allocation to be used for either Phase Two of Ives or the Ridge Road Affordable Housing Project off of Miller. Amy Case Miranda with Foothills Regional Housing is on Zoom if you have any questions for her, but that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I would open it up at this time for members of the public to speak on this item. I have no one signed up to speak, so I will go to questions from council. Questions from council for staff on this item. And we have our Foothills Regional, okay, going once, going twice. Is there any, any questions before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion on this item? Done yet? You wish to speak?
No.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. And Councilor Weaver, may I have a motion on this item?
You may, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I misunderstood.
Sorry.
I move to approve Resolution 44-2025, a resolution approving the assignment to the Jefferson County Housing Authority, DBA Foothills Regional Housing, of $2,080,116 of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado's 2025 private equity bond volume cap allocation from the state ceiling for private equity, activity bonds and authorizing the execution and delivery of an assignment and other documents in connection therewith. Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would just like to register some very strong support for this, this issue. Foothills Regional Housing has a vision for the Miller Ridge development out there and it really is something that will, will be a very valuable part of our community. There's a connection with the college. There's the designation of housing being set aside for about 60% of the area median income. There will be, it's just a wonderful project from top to bottom. We'll hear more about it very soon. But I do, again, want to register my very strong support for, for this funding going to that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Eight ayes, the motion carries.
Thank you so much. We will now go to agenda item number three. Councilor Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Council Bill 18-2025, an ordinance approving the disposition of parkland at Hank Stites Park in connection therewith, authorizing exchange of land to correct the property boundary. This is an ordinance on first reading. At issue, Hank Stites Park is located northwest corner of 29th Avenue and Newland Street. There are discrepancies at the north and west sides of the park where improvements do not align with the property boundary. In 2021, this was approved by city council to be resolved by a land exchange with the adjacent property owner. However, the approval has lapsed. Approval of this ordinance will reauthorize that approval and allow the land swap to be completed. Because this exchange involves parkland, Section 16.5 of the city charter requires unanimous approval by the entire council.
Thank you. Thank you. This is, as Counselor Hoppy said, this is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. It is not quasi-dutational. May I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 18-2025, an ordinance approving the disposition of parkland at Hank Stites Park, and in connection therewith, authorizing an exchange of land to correct the property boundary. On first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, September 22nd, 2025, at 6:30 PM as a virtual meeting and in council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication, as provided by Section 5.11 of the Charter. Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Dozeman. Would the clerk please poll the council? Thank you. That, all right, let's not get too much chatter going on. We're doing good. That concludes the action items. We will go now to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff.
I would just like to thank Onarina Maloney for her first solo nights. Good job. Congratulations. Appreciate you being here. And then also, extra kudos to Lauren McIlak and her staff on the comp plan, city plan, that it was a huge effort. We're very excited to implement that. And then CZB, I think they left already, but we're lucky to have CZB work with Wheat Ridge for so many years. They really know our community, and they, they give us a plan that we can implement, and that really, really tells a story about Wheat Ridge. So, nice job, Lauren. So, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. City Managers Matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go to elected officials matters. Let's start with Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to just give a lot of, of kudos and, and just say it's a very exciting time to be in Wheat Ridge and be part of this community. This past Saturday, the green officially opening. Lots, lots of time and years in the making of that, but just such an exciting thing for our community. And then that coupled with tonight with our city plan adoption and so many other things. I'm just very proud of our community, very proud of our, our residents who have taken such an active role in the shaping of things like our city plan and how our, our green is going to continue to weave itself into our community for years to come. But I'm, just wanted to, to give kudos for that. It was a great, great celebration, a great time on Thursday night and then, I'm sorry, Friday night and then Saturday as well. And then I also just wanted to thank the Jeffco Food Policy Council for being here and for our proclamation and, and the work that they're doing. I was also a little remiss, and I felt bad, I didn't know about the tin shed, but I do now. And so I'm, I'm encouraging everyone to please look up the tin shed or, or any of our other pantries and, and give them their support, whether you're giving them money or donating food or donating your time and volunteering, because it's a, it's something that we as a community should, should get together and bond together and really take care of our, our community members. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holtine.
Thank you. I, I'm sure I'm going to be the second of eight counselors and one mayor who is singing the praises of the green at 38th. That was just really exciting on Saturday to be there. I was not at the movie on Friday night, but people I knew were. And my phone was on fire with text messages from people who were just like, like absolutely fangirling and fanboying over just how well-done it was and what a great community gathering place. And more than one person said Wheat Ridge can have nice things. And, and, and two of the people who texted me on Friday have been here as long as I've been here and know how long and how much work it's taken to get that, get the green, you know, from an idea to a reality. So just congratulations to everybody, and I just, I love it. It's so, it's great. The second thing I want to mention is I have signed up for, America Walks every year has a challenge called Week Without Driving. And it challenges, in particular, elected officials, but community leaders to pledge to go a week without driving their car. And the reason they do that, and I'm just going to read this from their website, is that if you can drive or afford a car, you may not understand what it's like to rely on walking, rolling, transit, and asking for rides. But for nearly a third of people living in the United States, people with disabilities, young people, seniors, and people who can't afford cars or gas or insurance, this is our everyday. And so I, you know, for me, it's not that hard of a pledge. Other than driving tables to my neighbor's house over the weekend, I've only been in my car once, twice in the last week. So anyway, I just invite anyone else who would want to join that challenge with me to just experience our own community without, without the privilege and access of a car, because we have a lot of neighbors who are in that situation. Then my third thing is we have our annual block party every year, the first Sunday after Labor Day. And it was, we had over 100 people, and it's just, it was so much fun to see how many new, new people came, young families. It was just, it was vibrant. Without local works, party in a box, the, the block party support container shipping box that they have, it would be such a hassle to plan that party, but because local works makes it so easy, we just had to get a couple guys with trucks and go get the stuff, and we were able to quickly set up, which allowed me to actually enjoy the party. And we had kind of a fun story come of it. One of our neighbors who rents, has moved in, loves the neighborhood, told the landlord she wanted to buy the house. And the landlord informed her two weeks ago that he was not going to renew the lease because he planned to sell the house. And the fa-, it's a family, young family living there, and they were just absolutely devastated. And at the block party, we made an announcement, we didn't make an announcement, but we were like telling people about her situation. And she connected with a neighbor whose mother died recently in our neighborhood, and they are going to be renting the mother's house and staying in the neighborhood. So just a story about like why we do the block parties, because neighbors connecting with neighbors is community resilience. And those are the conversations that are making a huge difference in the lives of my immediate neighbors, and I just encourage everyone to have a block party if you don't already, and thank local works for making it super easy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was not able to attend the grand opening on Saturday, and I do regret that, but the pictures look wonderful. And having been to several events now at the green on 38th, I am fully convinced that this will be probably the most important public space in all of Wheat Ridge going forward. The other thing that I have is that on Saturday night, we found out that there were two winners for the $1.8 billion lottery, and it wasn't me.
As they say, better luck next time. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too was able to attend the day of festivities for the green at 38th, although I missed the ribbon cutting and was sad to do so. But wonderful park. My boys absolutely love the space. It's gorgeous and a lot of years of work and effort put into making that space a Wheat Ridge space. So looking forward to a lot more events moving forward. And we also just wrapped up our Carnation Festival Board meeting, it is our wrap-up meeting. So that's the largest fundraiser for many of our service organizations. So the Kiwanis, the Optimists, and the Rotary all, all serve beer. And it also helps to support the West Metro Fire Department and many of our school booster clubs and athletics. So I just want to thank everybody for making this another successful year and, and for supporting those service organizations that support our community.
Thank you.
Counselor Weaver.
Thank you. Um, I, I don't have much tonight, and I don't mean to be a downer. I'm dealing with animal issues in District Three. And one issue that keeps coming up is dogs on leashes. And we just have a lot more people in Wheat Ridge, and I'm, I'm asking staff if, I, and I guess I'm asking counselors for their support on, do we need to sort of have a conversation about how that's dealt with? Because there've just been a lot of continued dogs off-leashes, and at least in District Three, it's actually caused some, some pretty significant dog fights. And, and it's no fun when you have to go to animal court. So, do I have support for that? Is that something that we need to study, or do we need to just?
Well, I'll just pass that on to the police department, and if you have specific addresses or areas of District Three, that would be helpful.
Okay. I, I do have a question. If it, if it's happening on a, because some constituents called me, it doesn't matter if it happens on like the condo's parking lot. It's an off-leash law, correct?
Private property does not, does, I don't think we enforce private property. So parking lot of a condo association would be private property.
So if the attack happened in the parking lot between two owners and the dogs that were both off-leash?
Well, the attack is different than off-leash.
Well, the dogs were off-leash in the...
Yeah, okay. We, I don't believe we enforce off-leash dogs on private property. If there was an attack and there's a report of that, we will, we will respond to that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I just wanted to answer some constituents. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week was busy. I attended the Legislative Barbecue with Family Tree Actions Center, Senior Resource Center, Jefferson Mental, Mental Health. And that was a really good turnout, and they did, they did ask about you, Mayor.
You gave my apologies.
Yes, yes. You were missed. And then the green was amazing. I, I felt, you know, there's so many good things, but the one thing I just want to talk about was, you know, activating that space. There was, as I was parking and walking, I saw people leaving the green, they had just done yoga. So they had their yoga bats, and I, and they were, they just thought that was great, to be outside, do yoga. And so I hope that that is something, when the weather's, weather's good, that we can, people have that opportunity. And I think, everything too is, is it, it really kind of is a advertisement for, like the Weaver Direct Center, when they're seeing events out at the green, people want to join in. They're, you might be a little hesitant to go inside the building, but I think it's just a great idea, and I hope that it just stays activated. After that, I went to, to reclaim integrative dentistry and had a really long chat with Dr. Kevin Schwant over in my neighborhood. Really great conversation. And he was having like a block party for his clients, everybody around there, and I thought, what a, you know, he's been there for a while, but he's really, you know, trying to expand his business, and I really wish him well, and, and I just want to thank him at my moment now. Thank you for your, spending your time and, you know, making it really personal to me. And so I just wanted to tell everybody about that. And then the last thing is, yes, I do want to say thank you to local works, you know, for the block party library. I hope everybody in Wheat Ridge, you know, takes a look at that. That is such a wonderful thing that we have for our community. And, you know, so big thanks to local works. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The realization of the green coming to life this weekend is something I've been working on for a very long time, and just so very, very, just to say proud is an understatement. Way back before local works was local works when it was Wheat Ridge 2020, before it got renamed. We had a couple of people on our community that really worked to activate that space the way it was as it was, that really just kind of brought together the, the visualization of what that space could be for our community. And I'm really looking forward to it in the future. I go by it several times a day. There are people in it at all times of day. But I just want to say thank you to a few of those, those pioneers that were there in the beginning, and that would be Britta Fisher, Tara John, Kim Calamino, Tom Abbott, Joyce J., and Chad and Kim Har. And thank you for all of our citizens for not giving up. It was a long time coming, and I really appreciate everybody's support over the years.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I get into my council report, Executive Director Piper was here tonight letting us know about the expansion of the Makerspace and, I believe, asking for $30,000 to be added to the budget. Do we have consensus to add that to the budget for, would it be for 2026, or are you asking for?
I believe they're asking this year.
This year?
Yeah.
Is that something we can feasibly do?
Yeah. We, we have funds available.
Okay. Do we have consensus to add that to the 2025 budget?
Looks like we do.
Fantastic. Cool. While we're talking about local works, they do a phenomenal job. I had a chance to stop over at the Melrose Drive, I almost said Melrose Place, different, different TV show. The Melrose Drive Block Party the other day. My, I used to live in that neighborhood, and my mom lives in that neighborhood, and Kristy Davis, who we all know, does a phenomenal job putting that on. I walk in and, and there's Counselor Ohm over there grilling up burgers and dogs for everybody. So he not only does, does great counseling, but he also does, does great grilling. So I want to thank them for, for an amazing block party. We were not the only family that left that neighborhood and, and comes back every year because it's such a great, great neighborhood for, for everybody. So fantastic. The green at 38th, I think everybody said everything about it, but it's, it's not only going to be an amazing gathering space, it's going to be an economic driver for, for Wheat Ridge for a number of years. It's going to be something that's going to feed those businesses and, and in turn feed sales tax for a long time. So that's something that hasn't been mentioned, but something that's going to be huge for, for the future of Wheat Ridge. Saturday was busy. I, after the block party, I had an opportunity to stop in at the Arvada Harvest Festival. Mayor Simpson invited my family and I up to the mayor's reception for that. Very cool, very cool to have it back on, in the, in the main area of Arvada over there. Something we should consider, because it was like those businesses were very busy that weekend and really pumping in a, a lot of sales tax and a lot of customers to those businesses. So maybe not for the Carnation Festival, maybe as we move forward and start to program the green a little bit more, some, some great ideas for, for how we can implement that. And then Sunday, I had the opportunity to stop over at Twisted Smoothie for their end of the summer block party. They had a lot of cool stuff going on, so if you guys live in District One or, or anywhere around there, Twisted Smoothie is, is phenomenal, put on a great, put on a great block party as well. So, big fantastic weekend in Wheat Ridge, so I appreciate it. And as usual, if you can find it, you should find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to, I think, start tonight with a thank you to Lauren and Ella and the, their department, and really all of the folks that worked on the city plan, CZB. I think it's really a monumental plan that we're able to bring this forward to, you know, coming from our residents. I think that's the really key takeaway. I think there's a lot of really exciting, exciting things in that, and, and I really look forward to the implementation process for that going forward. People have talked about the green on 38th, what a great, what a great day Saturday was. It's a great facility, staff and the designers and the contractors, and I mean, just the, to be there and to see the activity that it generates, the enthusiasm from, from little, little kids playing around to moms and dads who are happy that they're playing around, and, and grandparents that are out there watching their grandkids, that, you know, or other people's grandkids enjoy it. So that's really going to activate 38th Avenue. If you did any reading on the city plan, that's one of our goals, is to activate 38th Avenue as a, at least a 20-year goal coming from Wheat Ridge 2020. And I think we've, you know, we've marked time and the street is getting better, but as I said Saturday, you know, we're not, we weren't the first whistle stop on the railroad going out of town. So we don't have a lot of beautiful brick buildings and, and already made downtown, but we are really on the process, on the, on the path to creating a downtown gathering area for our community, and I think it's really a, an outstanding facility. So I want to thank everybody who had a, had a part in that. I want to thank Paige for coming tonight to talk about the Makerspace. This is another really exciting feature in our, in our city, just got a lot of, you know, not only just economic benefits, but a lot of, you know, team building and community building there. And so I was going to really put a plug in for, for council to be positive about making a little 10% investment in that. You stole my thunder, you know? Mayor Protem. But anyway, I, I want to thank you for doing that. I think, I think they've been good stewards of the, of the funds that they've had, and I want to see them continue. I want to echo Counsel, Counselor Dozeman's, you know, thoughts about the Carnation Festival and the parade. I thought we had a wonderful turnout this year. It's really, it's an exciting parade. It really brings a lot of life and shows the life of our community. So I want to thank you for your efforts. You've been involved in that for a long time. I want to thank you for that. Let's see, that's about all I had to say.